The absence of the mayor, I'll call the work session for September 25th to order, and we'll have our finance officer take role.
Sir, here. Johnson?
Here.
Kana?
Here.
Minor?
Here.
Moser?
Here.
City Manager Nelson?
Here.
City Attorney Danner?
Here.
At the pleasure of the commission, I'd ask that you elect a mayor pro temp to serve both for the work session as well as for the commission meeting, as Mayor Hoffner is unavailable this evening.
I nominate Nathan.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for Nathan Johnson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Right, the pro temp Mayor Johnson, I'll give you the gavel.
Alright, so we will begin with, I suppose you're gonna take the reins here Dave, guide us through the presentation. At least do introductions.
Yeah, sure. So in 2013, we did a housing study in partnership with Yankton Area Progressive Growth as a part of our housing, trying to address housing needs issues. And Community Partners was selected as the consultant to do it at that point in time because they had a good reputation around not just South Dakota but the upper Midwest for producing an analysis that could support tax credit projects and other projects that required some sort of state or federal assistance. The other thing that they have is they have the respect of a lot of the contractors in and around our community and our state as far as confidence in knowing whether or not it's time to build or as far as creating additional housing units. So, without further ado, Scott Knudsen from Community Partners is back to present the 2017 area housing study update.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I should've asked, are we being televised or anything? We are being televised, okay, I didn't know if I-
I think it's live too, we're livestreaming.
Okay, so to use the microphone and things, that's part of what I need to be able to do here, okay, great. Again, I am Scott Knudsen with Community Partners Research. I was the lead person on the project the last time it was conducted, back in 2013, was also the lead person this time, so I brought with me some past history. And I want to stress that this was an update, we did, it was from the 2013 original housing study, but with a number of things that have been going on in Yankton, there was a feeling that we needed to look at new information. A lot of that had to do with significant housing development that's taken place since that time, but it also gave us a chance to take a look at updated demographic information. At the time we did the last one, pretty much the 2010 census was the demographic resource that we turned to. Now we're able to access some 16, 2017 information. That's another long discussion, sometimes that information isn't real good when it comes to the city of Yankton and some locations in South Dakota, but at least we could take a look at it and see what people were saying about your community. We applied some of the same research methods that we'd used in 2013. Again, we looked at statistical information, demographic data sources, we also collected information locally, and that's where we can sometimes dispute some of that demographic information that's out there from national sources, and we can look locally and look at things like building permits, housing occupancy patterns, home sales activity, those types of things. So we collected information locally. We did a select number of local interviews, we didn't do as extensive an amount of interviewing this time as we did in 2013, but that was partly because we were more familiar with the community, we didn't have to kind of take that learning curve up. We also completed a telephone survey of the larger rental properties. This document does contain an executive summary and a copy of it was back here and possibly distributed to all of you at your table. It summarizes the key findings and the highlights of the document, a lot of the things I'm gonna cover tonight are contained in that executive summary. It also gives a broad overview of some of the housing development recommendations. Other sections within this update, we do have an extensive section once again on demographic information, a shorter section on projection information, looking five years forward in the future, a section on income and housing costs, an existing housing data section, which is kind of a catch-all for those things like building permits, home values, lot availability, just kind of the stock that's on the ground, what's been done. The rental housing inventory, where we talk about the multifamily rental properties that we surveyed, there's a section in here about senior housing with services, the specialized care type things, assisted living and memory care, a section on employment and economic trends, again looking at national data sources, things like the Bureau of Labor Statistics, unemployment rates, those types of things. And finally, a lot of the document is the findings and recommendations, where we zero in on rental housing, homeownership, single-family issues, and then on housing rehabilitation and revitalization. So that's the way this document lays out. I'm gonna hit some of the highlights that we zeroed in on and led us to make some of the recommendations contained in this document. Excuse me. First is that Yankton, of course, is the primary focus of our demographic research. However, we did once again take a look at that broader area, which we define for better or worse as Greater Yankton. It's an aggregation of 24 different jurisdictions within an approximate 15 to 20 mile radius of the city. But again, our primary focus is to look at Yankton but to have some sense of the region. In a few cases, we also took a look at a four-county region, but that starts to get larger in size, and I think once you move farther away from Yankton, especially into those more rural areas, you tend to see more losses and decline in population in the areas just outside of it. As expected, Yankton has been growing and adding households, the last study had used a projection of about 58 households per year as what we had expected to see going forward. It's hard to measure that exactly, but one test that we- can apply to it, is to look at growth in your housing stock. And so far this decade, now projections we had used last time proved to be fairly- -at risk when you look at growth in the housing stock. We're actually showing population losses for the city of Yankton. After about four or five discussions and revisions, one of the things that we zeroed in on was that the national data sources have been picking up some reduction in what we're gonna call a group quarters population. And a group quarters population are people that do not live in normal typical households. In Yankton, that's three primary groups. One of those groups are people that are incarcerated in the prison system. Another group is people that live in skilled nursing homes, memory care, those types of things, where it's more of an institutional setting. And a third one is a student population, people living, say, in college dormitories that are not counted as independent households. So when, once we did some more digging into this, one of the things we were seeing is that the population reduction, if it's true, was largely tied to a decline in the federal prison camp population. Now, we know that that goes up and down over time, but in the last few years, it's probably dipped somewhat. I don't want this to be taken out of context, because I think the city itself, for a permanent resident population, a normal resident population has probably been growing, but there has been some reduction due to this group quarters reduction. There was a side discussion before the meeting started about average household size as well, and like most communities, you're also seeing one- and two-person households predominantly now in the community. Aging trends also continuing as projected, the last study had talked about this, the advancement of the baby boom generation. What we're continuing to see is growth in the 55 and older age ranges, population and households. There's been probable reductions in the city of Yankton in households and people aged 54 and younger. Again, it's a bit hard to measure between the decennial census, but that would be the best information that's available. This is consistent with South Dakota, it's consistent with your region of the country, it's consistent with a lot of the upper Midwest, as the aging baby boomer population moves through the aging cycle. But as we talked about, another thing that comes into play in Yankton's case is the fact that you are a bit of a gravitational location for older seniors. I mean, you do have specialized medical care in your community, you do have specialized housing, so certainly some of the growth in the older populations has also been due to people that want to live here, say, compared to a rural area where they can't access those same services and amenities. This study has used growth potential going forward over the next five years of approximately 50 to 60 households in an average year, generally very similar to what we'd found back in 2013. And one of the reasons for that is this community really has a pretty steady pattern of growth. If you look back over the last three decades, you're gonna see growth at that level, right around 50 to 60 households per year playing out over a long time period. Now, that's not to say this is perfectly linear, that every year you're gonna add 50 households. Some years you're gonna add more, some years you're gonna add less, but if you average that out over five years or say 10 years, it becomes fairly stable over time. It certainly is possible that you'll grow faster than that, especially when you look, I think, at the housing activity that's been underway in the city in 2017, where you've seen above-average housing starts. But my guess is you're gonna see some of that tempered in the next few years, when there's a slightly, there's a dip in that housing construction activity, and again, it'll average out somewhere between 50 and 60 households, with the potential you could grow faster. Aging trends will continue as the baby boomers advance. By the year 2022, the Esri data source that we've used for a lot of our age-based projections projects that 53% of all Yankton area households will be aged 55 and older, so more than half of households will be in those empty nester to senior type age ranges. Over the next five years, the single largest 10-year age cohort will be the 65 to 74-year-old age range. And again, that's generally speaking, a retiree type of group, although increasingly people are working beyond age 65. But for a 10-year group, that's the largest net gain that's expected. I'm gonna talk a little bit about income information, just because I feel I have to, but I have to give a caveat that income information in my mind is one of those things that's very difficult to measure, and I think it's easily for income information to be flawed. One of the primary sources we use is the American Community Survey, where people disclose their own income, it's self-disclosed, there is a margin of error in it, and I oftentimes question, especially when some of the demographic sources try and project forward income information. I think it's extremely hard to do, but there's times where we need to look at income information. I say that because one of the things that jumped out at us this time is that the median household income and the median family income for the city of Yankton decreased in the last couple of years. If you compare 2015, which is their most recent year, to 2010, there was a slight reduction in the midpoint household income level and the midpoint family income level. One possible explanation for that is that the data is flawed, but another possible explanation is that you have seen more people move into their retirement years. So back in 2010, they had earned income from employment, those types of things, they may now be on a fixed income, and they may be retired. That can tend to dip the annual income level. It doesn't necessarily mean that those people don't have assets, though, many in cases they have savings and asset accumulation. So again, I don't want that to become a dominant factor of this, but it is something we had to be cognizant of. For the Greater Yankton area, now if you moved outside of the city of Yankton, what we did tend to see was growth in the number of households with an income of $75,000 or more, and in many cases, $100,000 or more. So you're seeing some growth in those higher income ranges, but you're also seeing some growth in the lower income ranges, and possibly a hollowing out, and this is something politicians have talked about for the last decade or more, kind of that removal of that middle class, that the richer getting richer, the poorer getting poorer, and there's fewer people in the middle. We did a study for Sioux Falls a year or two ago that showed that same thing. Again, I'm not completely sold that those statistics are accurate, but it tended to show the real hollowing out of, say, the 35 to 50,000, 60,000 income range in the city of Sioux Falls, and maybe that's some of the same things we're seeing here, at least as reported through these data sources. Excuse me. I do want to point out that there is a significant disparity in income levels when you're talking about homeowners versus renters. So in the city of Yankton, if you were a homeowner, the midpoint household income level was over $57,000. However, if you were a renter in the city of Yankton, the midpoint income level was below $22,000. So again, that wide disparity that exists between homeowners and renters in this community, and in most communities, but I do have to point out that renter household income is fairly low for the city of Yankton. We would expect it to see it in maybe the mid to high 20s in most communities, and it was only about 22,000 according to the most recent American Community Survey. Jumping to some of the existing housing highlights, single-family construction, since 2015, Yankton has been permitting more than 35 single-family units per year. In 2017, now I didn't get the latest statistics from Dave before I came here, and I should've done that, but it's possibly do 50 or more. Family units were permitted in Yankton that we could track was back in the year 2006, so before the national economic recession, before the national housing market collapsed. Been more than 10 years, but certainly 2017 was a good year for single-family housing starts. Home values also seem to be rising. Now again, I don't want to overplay this, but in 2016, the last full year of data, the midpoint home sale price for existing houses now was at about $147,000, and that was up about $15,000 from 2015. So that was a pretty big one-year jump. I'd like to see the 2017 information come in, plus that there was fairly strong demand for existing houses. That one-year increase could also be somewhat of an aberration in home, there was some issues about water service, those types of things. I guess from the look we took this time, lots and land did not appear to be much of an issue in 2017. We found multiple choices existed out there in different subdivisions, multiple parts of the city, different price ranges, and I guess I would have to say that at least in our opinion, developers are fairly, I mean, no one is sitting out there with a huge subdivision of improved lots, rather what they're doing is improving 15, 20, 30 lots in each phase, they can't, that kind of supplies them with a two or a three-year sales period or building supply, and when that lot inventory is used up, go on and develop more. So I guess to me, it didn't at least look like there was any kind of an issue with resident availability. And obviously, the Westbrook Estates project helped to address the more affordable market segment. Back in 2013, there was almost nothing getting constructed in that real affordable price range, and I think that changed when the community took some efforts to try and develop a more affordable subdivision. Multifamily construction, obviously since we were here last, three large-scale projects, the Westbrook Estates Apartments, and then the Green Suites, although when we were here doing some of this research on Green Suites was not yet open for occupancy, I don't know if it is yet or not, I'm, okay. Yeah, that was still under construction. So, but the other two certainly were open for occupancy and were doing well. So between those three projects, by our count, you added about 118 rental units, a moderate rent category, and some of them, like in Yankton Heights, also had some income restrictions, although it was tended to be more of a workforce housing, I mean, it wasn't low-income housing, it was kind of a moderate-income housing with a moderate rent structure. Despite the expansion of supply and the conventional market rate segment with that Westbrook Estates apartment building, we found an extremely low vacancy rate. When we did our survey in May of that market segment, I would say that the vacancy rate was under 1%, and that was actually lower than what we had found in 2013. And it wasn't high in 2013, but it was actually even lower now. So despite some expansion in supply, unit absorption had gone, had been strong. You know, as political leaders in this community, I mean, we did pick up some stuff in the telephone surveys, some building owners and managers saying things like Yankton is overbuilt, there's too many apartments being added, it's gonna cause problems, and yet when I'd ask them how their particular building or properties were doing, they'd say, "Well, I'm full, but I'm sure others are having problems." We never really found anybody that was having problems. Now, I guess, that can change, this is a snapshot in time, but it did appear that despite the expansion of supply, those units were absorbed and vacancy rates were low. Yankton Heights added about, or added in Phase 1, 30 income-restricted moderate rent units. So while that was also a net gain to the affordable housing inventory, we have to couch that a bit by saying that Sage Wood A&amp;B, which was another income-restricted moderate rent project, actually completed its contract compliance in that same timeframe. So 18 units in that market segment segwayed into conventional housing. So the net gain through the Yankton Heights was not 30 units, it was probably closer to 12 units. When we did our survey, we did some, find some vacancy in this market segment, it was almost 7% of the buildings that we surveyed. Since that time, I've heard that some of those buildings that had a few vacancies have filled those up. I have to point out that in this market segment, because you have to income-qualify people, you have to send out things like income certifications, prove that they can actually meet the income test, there can be vacancies from time to time due to processing. It's more typical to see a unit sit vacant for a month or two while processing is being done on a new applicant. So I wasn't overly concerned about that, but that was probably actually the weakest of the market segments we surveyed. Subsidized rental housing, what you might think of as traditional low-income housing, where people tend to pay rent based on household income, you still have a very large inventory of subsidized housing, but again, there's been some unit losses since we were here in 2013. And these were recognized at that time as potentially going to leave the subsidy program, and in fact, they both did. Pine Tree East and Pine Tree West, with a combined 72 units, have completed their contract compliance. Again, they've converted to conventional market rate housing. One thing that was done here, as a way to mitigate that impact on tenants, the tenants in occupancy were given rent assistance vouchers to help them afford the new rents. The distinction here is that when Pine Tree East and Pine Tree West were subsidized buildings, that subsidy was in Yankton and it was tied to those buildings. Now it's tied to the tenants, and the tenants can move with it. So in all of those buildings, Pine Tree East and Pine Tree West, a number of those tenants with vouchers have already moved out of those buildings. Some of those may have left Yankton. With portable assistance, they can go to Sioux Falls, Vermillion, or anywhere else, and so over time, it's very likely that some of those resources will be lost. Subsidized rental housing, despite the loss of some project-based subsidized housing, there was some vacancy here as well, we found about a 5.6% in general occupancy subsidized, a 5.9% vacancy rate for senior disabled occupancy. So again, there were some open units, but again, that may have been as much due to processing times and filling units with the paperwork requirements. A better test to me in many cases is to look at the voucher program, which is run by your local housing authority. They had about 105 to 110 Yankton households receiving assistance, and they also at that time had a waiting list of about 50 names. So there were people waiting to get subsidized housing resources in the community. Specialized senior housing, multiple providers of specialized senior housing do exist in your community that provide housing with services like memory care and assisted living. Since we were here in 2013, there's been no net addition to that specialized care senior stock, nothing has been built or developed. However, there has been some change in the use of units, one of the previous assisted living providers has converted more to memory care, so there's a smaller supply of assisted living in Yankton, there's a larger supply of memory care. There's also been the replacement of the Yankton Care Center, that skilled nursing home was built, a new facility. And I would have to say that you have now two brand, I mean, not brand-new, one is brand-new, one's a little bit older, but two relatively new nursing homes in this community, and that's a real nice asset. I mean, with a moratorium on nursing homes, a lot of communities still have, you know, 1960s-built facilities that were originally designed for shared occupancy and things, and I think you've got some real nice facilities, at least in terms of skilled nursing care in the city of Yankton. We found some unused capacity that existed within certain market segments, but I'd have to say overall, the occupancy rates were generally high. Again, some of these types of housing can have high rates of turnover, so you can catch a month when a number of units rolled over and have to be refilled, and other months, there's no turnover. Memory care had expanded, as we talked about, but there were fewer assisted living options that had improved the utilization rates in assisted living, because back in 2013, there had been a number of open units. But with a decreased supply, those utilization rates in both memory care and assisted living were now pretty high. Looking quickly at some employment and wage-type information, the unemployment rate remains low, as you well know. A lot of that is due to job growth, we can track job growth in the city of Yankton through things like unemployment compensation, so we know that you've been adding jobs in the community, but I also have to point out that part of it is due to the fact that the area's labor force has not necessarily been growing over time. So you don't have as many people out there looking for work, I mean, or that's been a fairly stable number of individuals, so as jobs have been created and jobs have been filled in the city of Yankton, the unemployment rate continues to go lower. But you would like to see growth in the area's labor force eventually as well, and I think that's one of the reasons you're looking at housing options, is to help attract people to the community. You know, again, a lot of people live and work locally, approximately 85% of the people who were employed within the city of Yankton, based on the statistics that we looked at, have a commute time under 30 minutes. Now, that includes people that both live and work in Yankton, of course, but even those that don't live in Yankton are within the immediate area and community, and for the employment options that you do have available. Looking now at some of the specific recommendations that we made in this document, and again, these are kind of broad-based, but to give you a sample of what's in the document, we're looking at about 140 to 165 additional rental units recommended over the next five years. Some of that is already underway as we speak. The second phase of the Westbrook Estates project, I believe, would have 72 units, and an application is probably being submitted this week for a Phase 2 of Yankton Heights, the income-restricted property. If those two proceeded, it would, again, greatly expand your rental choices in the community in that moderate rent structure. These moderate rent projects are a very practical way to address growth-generated demand. Again, we've got a lot of renters that have fairly limited incomes, these projects have done a good job of trying to keep those rents affordable. You'd love to see maybe some even lower rent housing built, some new subsidized, but I don't think that's gonna happen. Rental unit recommendations, we continue to see some opportunities and have included, oh, virus protection. We've, we continue to recommend some higher amenity, higher rent rental housing, and I think that's the next logical step for the community. I mean, I think the Westbrook Estates has done a good job of keeping their rents moderate, but we also see some demand for some higher-priced, higher amenity rental units in the community. With the low and median household income for many renters, additional subsidized housing could also be justified. I understand, and we recognize that you have a lot of subsidized housing, but most of that's 20, 30 or more years old, and so improving the quality and the condition of that through new subsidized would be great, but again, that's highly unlikely in the current political climate. The federal government really isn't funding subsidized housing, and hasn't for a number of years at any kind of large scale. Senior housing with services, the projections we used in this document show as much as a 15% increase in growth of a target market of older senior citizens, typically defined as age 75 and older, through the year 2022. So that population continues to grow in your area and could justify some additional development. Looking longer term, you see a significant increase in that older senior population after the year 2025, as the baby boom generation starts to move into those older age ranges. In the near term, it's a much more moderate growth. And again, we have to recognize that potential exists for seniors to come outside this Greater Yankton aggregation, because you are a magnet with your specialized care that you can offer. In our opinion, a near-term unit expansion of, say, 10 to 15% in most market segments can be justified, just to keep pace with growth. Memory care and assisted living have high current utilization rates and would seem to be the most logical areas for unit expansion going forward in the next few years. We continue to see a small supply of lighter services, more independent senior housing, where people could say, get a noon meal, maybe get weekly assistance with housekeeping and stuff, but we do have to admit that even though you've got a small supply of those units, there was some unused capacity in both 2013 and 2017, so that housing type hasn't really seemed to catch on here very well, for those that have been offering it. It's very possible you could see an outside provider come in with a new facility for seniors, but given the fact that you've got some well-established providers, I'm thinking instead it's more likely you're gonna see some internal adjustments, some minor expansions at some of your existing providers to address some of that need. Homeownership recommendations, this study has used a projection that annual demand for homeownership units will be between 25, or excuse me, 35 and 45 units per year. And again, that's fairly consistent, at least at the lower end of the range, with what you've been doing in recent years. Excluding maybe the 2017 year, you've been averaging about 34 single-family housing starts per year so far this decade. We think that has the potential to go up higher than that, and again, 2017 will be above that level, although we do pick up that in 2017, some of this is related to spec home development. I mean, it isn't, you've got some fourplexes and some things like that that are built, and I don't think all those units were sold before construction started. In 2013, again, very little activity was happening in that more affordable price range, Westbrook Estates has helped to change that. That said, we continue to see most of the demand for single-family units in what we'd call a moderate to higher price range. I mean, just given the profile of your community, with a large segment of the population being 55 and older, those people that are oftentimes looking at new houses are looking to upgrade in quality and features, lifestyle amenities, those types of things. So that's where most of the man will continue to exist. We do see up to 25 to 30% of the demand in the more entry-level affordable segment. I mean, some of that was done in Westbrook Estates, I think going forward, it looks like more of that demand will be met through an attached single-family, like a twin home or a townhouse type unit, to try and keep costs down. Again, 2017 at above-average activity, from what we can tell, there's been some, a lot of this was due to some attached single-family, like the fourplexes, like the twin homes, like the townhouses. That's both been oriented to affordable options for families and lifecycle housing needs of seniors as they move through the aging cycle. We would expect to see that continue to gain market share up to, say, 30% of all single-family construction in some type of attached unit over the next five years. Again, in your community, that tends to be a more moderately priced unit, say $250,000 or less, rather than say some real high-end kinds of attached housing units. The last real set of recommendations, this time around, we did not do an extensive neighborhood analysis like we'd done back in 2013, but that information would still be contained where we did a drive-around of some of the older neighborhoods. Instead, we looked at more statistical information here, and we do point out again that most of the housing that's on the ground is older housing in Yankton. The median year of construction for rental units is estimated to be 1970, so that's more than 45 years old for most of your rental stock. For owner occupancy units, the median year of construction is estimated to be 1967, so again, 50-year-old housing in the community. That represents the most affordable housing that you have, and the most affordable ownership options, and in most cases, the most affordable rental. So continued attention and improvement of the existing older housing stock is an important strategy looking forward. And with that, that was my last slide, and I think I actually went under 30 minutes, so. It was a goal to try and allow some time for some discussion, so I'm sorry if I moved along in a pretty good clip, but.
Does the commission have any questions?
I do.
I do. Did your study find anything on, like, a living-work-type community of people who may be looking for types of housing where they can live and work within a block, or, you know, I don't know the correct term for that, but kind of more of like, I don't know the term for it, but living and working in the same general area versus the community?
I'm afraid that I don't have any specific information about that, but obviously, that's a trend you're seeing in larger communities where people tend to want to locate. I would say that there's a heavy commuting culture in smaller communities and rural areas where people are willing to drive 15, 20 miles, and they don't seem to be troubled by that. I mean, the best statistics we could look at seem to indicate that most of the people who actually work in the city of Yankton do not live in your city limits, although we also know that there's areas right outside the city that are very close, that are rural areas or unorganized territories. But it does appear that a lot of people choose to drive to work, although not far, you know, I mean, 15 miles or less, 20 miles or less, that type of thing. Otherwise, I'm afraid I really can't speak to that. I think it's always smart, though, from a planning perspective, if you can, you know, create, I think that Green Suites, for instance, that apartment building, that location is right over by some industries, and I'm guessing some of those people are going to, you know, live and work right in that same neighborhood, so.
Any numbers that go with what is considered to be, you know, lower-price rent versus, you know, higher-income rent? You'd said there could be a demand there. Do you know what a range of rents would be at that level?
I'd have to look that up, but I would say that typically, what we were seeing, you know, with those new projects is, it may be considered high rent by some people, but I think for new construction, both the Yankton Heights and the Westbrook Estates had pretty moderate rent structures, you know, $850 or less for a lot of the two-bedrooms, and especially in Yankton Heights. I mean, I think what we were talking about is some rental units that, say, would be over $1,000 or $1,200, let's say, range for a two-bedroom, but might have some features like attached parking, you know, underground parking, or an attached garage parking, those kinds of things. So I think the developers have worked hard to try and keep their rents low, but it also has tended to be, you know, smaller units, probably fewer amenities in the building. That's worked great, you know, that first phase of Westbrook Estates filled up real quickly from what we learned, but we also think there's probably a higher price point out there. I'd have to look up some real specific stuff as far as the actual rent levels, but, so.
You talk about promoting rehabilitation of rental properties and some of our residential neighborhoods, are there any tools out there that we should be taking advantage of that could help that process occur?
I'm looking at Dave, and he's not looking at me. You know, it's hard. In Minnesota, where I come from, some of the community development block grant funds that come to the state are actually used for housing rehab in South Dakota, that's tended to be used more for economic development purposes, and less has been available for housing. I do think that they, the state has started to make some funds available for acquisition and demolition of substandard units with some of that money, but I'm not sure where a person could actually turn to for any kind of larger-scale rehabilitation activity. Instead, it's probably going to be more what we call a spot activity, where you try and deal with one or two houses that have the greatest need, and try and target programs or find resources for them, rather than, say, taking on an entire neighborhood with a big pool of money, so. And it may, you know, it's probably going to be a lot of just incentives to try and get people to keep up their properties. Now, again, rising home values tend to do that, too, and if existing home prices are increasing, people have a reason to invest in maintaining their property, but there may be some city incentives that could be given to that as well, so.
So I totally agree with Scott in that rising home prices and housing demand is what creates people to invest in some of our lower-end units. The other thing that creates investment is when the city, the municipality, does infrastructure projects just to improve the public infrastructure in front of some of those neighborhoods and make sure that's kept up well, it kind of tends to feed off itself, and, you know, we have the code enforcement end when things get to that point, and we're typically, you know, reclaiming two or three locations a year through that process, and Habitat for Humanity has then stepped in on a number of those occasions and done a really good job in those open spaces.
I've got to question the vacancy number, because in August, I was walking and running around town, the south part and the east part, and I kept seeing more and more, all summer long, more and more for-rent signs in front of houses that I know are rentals, and in front of buildings that have been, I suspect, subsidized housing, and all of a sudden now, they've got for-rent signs where they, for a long time, they did not have. And so I'm going, I just got to believe that vacancy rate is higher than the 1% right now.
If I were to say a couple of things about that, one, you know, I made the comment earlier, it is a snapshot in time, so we did this in May, and it's possible that things have changed. Number two, single-family rentals are something that we do not do a lot of surveying of. We did pick some of them up in here, but generally speaking, we're looking for multifamily buildings. So if there's single families and duplexes that have some vacancy issues, we would not necessarily always find those, and that could be another thing that you're picking up that we did not find. The reason we don't really sample that is no one's going to go out and build a single-family house as a rental unit, or at least they're not going to generally do that intentionally. They're going to build an apartment building, so that's what we're looking at, is those comparables.
I was looking at apartments, too. I go by, in that 15th Street neighborhood, there's a lot of apartments, and I'm like, wow.
Yeah. And I guess that would be my third thing, as you mentioned, some of them may have been subsidized at some point, and that is the one segment, you know, the income-based stuff is where we did find some vacancies, you know, 5% to 7%.
We used to have a very high number, I don't remember what it was, but do you know what that number of subsidized units is?
Yours is high. I mean, I would have that in here, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I think we found that back in 2013, when we looked at the number of subsidized units versus your total rental population, you had a very high percentage of subsidized-to-renter households, so.
Yeah, I think we were, at one point, I think we were third in the state for a number of subsidized units, but.
That wouldn't surprise me, yeah.
So there's some logical explanations for that, with Human Services Center being here in Yankton, where of course, based on the transitional housing is associated with that facility, we're of course going to have more subsidized units just, you know, emanating from that location in general. That's one reason that we're going to be bumped up higher than a number of other communities our size in the state.
Are you talking impact? Is that?
I'm talking a lot of outpatient care.
Okay. Which would be the impact.
Right.
Program, which is a great program, but again, I wasn't counting that. I think Dr. Stanis did a great job when he redid the Gurney Hotel for housing, and I assume that's subsidized, I don't know that, I guess, but Cedar Village, I mean, he's done a lot of work, as has, used to be Yahtzee, Yankton Area Adjustment, but they've.
We have that population graduating even out of those directly-controlled group homes and into other units throughout the community.
So Scott, when you looked at our demographics, and it's probably in the report, I just didn't get a chance to read the whole thing, is there anything about our demographics that is unique compared to other communities our size in the upper Great Plains?
No, and I think that's one thing we always have to caution, is like you say, when we talk about decline in average household size, when we talk about the aging populations, you know, those types of things, like I say, those are fairly common. If there was one concern I would have had this time, it was some of that income information. But I have to point out that when we did the 2013 study, we actually did some rankings comparing you to some other communities, and at that time, your income information was actually pretty good compared to a lot of the other communities. Now that seems to have flip-flopped, so that's why I don't want to overplay that. But that would be one of the few things I would bring up, is to maybe track that income information with future releases of the American Community Survey, just to see what that income is saying. And again, that may be a lot to do with the city itself, because it does appear that if you get into the surrounding areas, you do have some higher-income households that maybe locate outside the city limits, which has some impact, too.
Scott and I have this discussion about once a month, but, you know, Yankton, usually about every sixth or seventh year of the decade, of every decade, between the hard counts, Yankton has this appearance of being less and less competitive in the marketplace for some reason, and I don't know if it's regional modifiers that are used with estimates, the process, Scott's the wizard at all of that kind of thing. And then, when the decennial count comes out, and we'll see that in 2022 usually, it's a couple of years after the hard count that we see all the information, then there's like a reset button hit in Yankton, and we typically have grown 10% over, or excuse me, 6% over 10 years, and every decade in our history, other than one way back in the early 1900s, that's been very, very typical. So I'll be really, really interested, if I'm around long enough, to see the results of the next decennial count.
And that's very true. It gets real frustrating to work with a lot of these national data sources, because they really underestimate what's happening in a community like yours, and that's why we spend so much time counterbalancing that information and also looking at things like the building permits and some of the occupancy patterns and stuff like that, because, you know, if there was hundreds of vacant apartments out there, it would be one thing, but we at least didn't find them at the time, and even if there are some vacancies, it isn't tremendously large, at least in our opinion, so.
I think with respect to the income, too, that, I just read the other day that the national median income finally got back to where it was in 2000, at about $59,000, and so if we're at 57, we're not that far underneath the national median income, which surprises me to the extent that that's household income. If you read the advertisements in the newspaper, manufacturers are starting to increase benefits and wages to attract people, and I think that's got to be a positive overall for the city. I mean, I just, I have this sense that the wage base is going up.
So a lot of that has happened in the last couple of years, and there's usually a one- or two-year lag on all of that information becoming public, yeah.
Yeah, and again, we were looking at 2015, a lot of that income information was from 2015, and there is a two-year data lag, so yeah, for sure.
My question is, because we may not have really hard census numbers until 2022, when would you say it's appropriate to revisit a study like this? I mean, three years is, we have done a lot of housing, and I'm thinking we're going to continue to build, I'm not sure, at the same level, but I want to be able to give YIPG, who's been our partners in this, a good estimation of when is it appropriate to revisit this again?
I would say that we typically do a lot of this on kind of a five-year cycle for some communities, but there are situations, I mean, this was about a four-year in this case, and there are some other communities where it's, you know, three or four years. I think a lot of it just has to do with kind of the perception about what's, you know, whether things have kind of stopped because people are hesitant, you know, that type of thing, but as Dave pointed out, the farther you get away from that decennial census, the more we're, if we had to pull, you know, household and population estimates in 2020 before the census, my guess is for Yankton, they'd be really poor, and we'd have to do a lot of manipulation on them again, like we did this time. But typically, I'd say three to five years is a fairly normal cycle for a lot of communities to look at updating information, so. I did, while we were looking here, I just happened to look up the Westbrook Estates information about rent structure, I mean, just to throw that out there, but, I mean, that project, for like their two-bedroom units, the rents range from about $770 to $795. Tenants do have to pay electricity and heat on top of that, although in those multifamily buildings, that oftentimes will be, you know, $70 to $80. So I think you're probably looking at, you know, sub-900 for a two-bedroom, somewhere from about $850 to $900 is the typical two-bedroom rent. And again, that may be high by a lot of people's standards, but for new construction, that's actually a pretty attractive rent to me. I mean, you'd like to see rents lower, but that's not bad for having to build brand-new, And they've got a lot of one-bedrooms that are considerably lower than that, 630 is where the one-bedrooms top out, which are very popular with a lot of singles, younger singles and couples and things, so.
Are there any further questions for Scott? Well, thank you for your time, Scott.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the work you've done on this, and a lot to digest.
Yeah, there's a lot of information in here, and I'll be back again, I guess, in November, where I'm talking to the Progressive Growth Group as well, so some of you may be in. Don't expect a radically different presentation, though, so.
All right, so we will adjourn for approximately 15 minutes until we start our regular session at 7:00 PM. Oh, I will take a motion for that. We have a motion in a second. Roll call? Oh, voice vote. Everyone in favor, say aye. Everyone opposed, say nay. And with that, we are adjourned.
Did you talk to your side of the table?
I did.
So I've got, I've got, you haven't talked to us?